That can be kind of a follow-up on question one.
With that question.
Because we ask, what specific strengths would you bring to help us achieve this? Which is the success of our students.
And maybe what metrics would you use to measure it?
How would you measure success?
Or do we get the student part out of it right there and see what they say?
Yes, I agree with that.
We could do that.
Okay. Did you get that? Okay.
That would sort of substitute one.
So...
Or a hybrid of one, yeah.
Trustee Hamud?
To me, I really, I really want to know specifically about things that are relevant to the college. Like our four-year degrees that we're trying to attain. Some people are against that. Some people don't like the fact that community college are moving towards a four-year degree. I mean, that's a big part of what we're doing here at the college. The fact that we're a P-14 district, I mean, that's very unique to our college. You know, the workforce questions, that's very unique to our college. Those are questions that I want to know how, you know, the fact that, I mean, let's face it. This is a diverse community. And I want to know how they feel about that. We have to ask those long questions.
And what's been their experience with it? Do we have, is that, is their experience with a, you know?
There's no question about working in collaboration with the Dearborn Public Schools. I think we need to...
We put that up there. How do you feel about being a P-14?
Okay.
I'm a P-12 superintendent.
Okay.
Because that's, I mean, those are questions that I think are important and unique to our college and our district as a whole.
What is your question, trustee Hamud? How would you state that?
So there were, my last one was... The four-year degree.
It's the four-year that's adding on.
The four-year degree.
You want to ask a question about their, how do they feel about a community college offering a bachelor's degree?
And do they believe that our college should go into that direction?
Okay. All right, now, we have to make some decisions about which questions we're really going to add. So we have a whole bunch here, and how would you like us to proceed?
Well, given how this has all sort of evolved here, with several with about, one, two, three, four, five, six being removed, two being merged, that's seven less questions.
I was gonna say, there's a lot merged, yeah.
And that a lot can be sort of either reworded or as follow-ups. I, I think you're okay. I think Ms. Chadwick and I can massage this.
Re-work it a little.
And I think we'll be fine if you're in agreement with the general topics that were, you know, discussed tonight.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Anybody not comfortable? Trustee Hamud?
And, and are we gonna, are we going to make sure that all the candidates get these questions ahead of time?
Yes.
That's what I asked.
Yes.
Based on all the candidates coming out to campus, is there additional questions that are coming from different groups that we think would be useful?
That I don't know. You were present for everything.
Are you reviewing?
Yeah, I actually think the groups, and maybe Mr. McDonald and maybe others can speak to their, for their groups. I think they, they were asking the candidates during their specific sessions.
But were they asking questions that are different from what the board is asking?
Some, yeah, some the same.
Well, should we be including any of those?
Well, they might be specific to their groups, though.
Oh.
And we're gonna get the feedback from those questions.
Okay, but we won't have time to change questions by that point.
Right. We're, we're just gonna read the feedback from their questions.
Yeah, it's always...
The feedback will be incorporated during our discussion period.
Okay, all right.
How, how far in advance do they get the questions before their interview?
Probably as soon as we get them worked on.
Yeah, as soon as we put them together. And one of the advantages to asking some of the questions that are the same is that we can compare them with how they said them to us before.
Right.
It's kind of a check also.
I, I think we've got a good balance now.
You know, I hate, I hate to suggest another question, as you've noticed, but I just was wondering if there should be a question about safety.
I'm sorry.
If there should be a question about safety.
Campus safety.
Campus safety, given what's happening.
Yeah, I think that that's very important as well.
Good, good.
Yeah.
What would we ask?
Question about safety.
Good.
Do you have an ear fifteen?
I think we have one.
Give it in there?
Yeah, we've been asking questions on safety.
Yeah, the cabinet's been asking it.
Okay. That'd be good. Okay, good. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chevron.
Thank you.
And next, next item.
Before we go to the next...
Yes.
Ms. Chadwick thanked everyone, but we did not thank her.
She did too.
Did you?
I did too. I resemble that.
Thank you for thanking her, but I'd like to thank her because...
But I would do it profusely.
I'll join you in, in thanking her profusely. I, I really appreciate it. In a turbulent sea, she always manages to stay dry. I mean, she always... There's turbulence all around and she's above the fray.
Well, you're absolutely right, and on top of that, she's the most organized person I have ever dealt with.
Well, she certainly knows how to juggle a lot, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, she does, and she undertook extra duties with this.
Oh, you're not kidding. Oh, she got a lot of extra pay, you can be sure.
Did she? Well, you know, that is, that is an issue, actually. I mean, we've been... Did I just hear, yeah, well, one more zero?
In the front.
In the front or on the end?
In the front.
I don't know. Well, I mean, I, I am concerned about this and, and I'm kind of, you know, with the whole male-female thing with the actors and actresses. And so anyways, I, I just want to say that we, men and women should be...
Equally paid?
Yes.
Well, I think vice presidents have the same salary schedule.
Okay, but, well, anyways, okay. I'm just, just saying that when people undertake something extra or...
It isn't like anybody's getting paid less or more because of their sex.
What a crazy idea, Mary Lane.
Oh, yes, I know. Where did I come up with that?
Yeah.
And you know what? Many people that said on the committee, when I asked them, you know, what they thought of the whole thing, one of the first subject that comes up is how awesome Becky was.
Yep.
And it's like you, you know, the college and Becky, it's just, you know, and I'm so proud and not saying, you know, and I'm, it's just so, I'm so proud. Just like how I'm proud of my kids, even though you're not my, but that's just, you know, that sense of pride that's from the heart. That's how we felt.
And I knew her when.
And on, on the agenda tonight is an item of, hmm, what is the position that is supporting you?
Administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant, replacing Terry Hagan, so that she'll get some more help. Well, not more help, but at least some help. Okay, next item, ah, sorry?
Before we move on, can we, can we extend a little bit early?
No, you have to wait till night.
We have to wait until bloody last night. If the next one is in the middle of a...
Talk fast, John. We're looking at the clock.
You know what, why are you wishing that upon us? We still have time to not extend.
I, I know, we just got a lot to get through.
Wishful thinking.
Wishful thinking.
No, but we'll just stop and extend.
Next item, please.
Next item, special request, AFT Local 1650 request to address the board, Mr. John McDonald, president of 1650.
Thank you. One thing that came up, came to mind is you, don't count this against my time, this deals with what you've been dealing with. Is there gonna be adequate time to have HR do the appropriate due process if you're seeing the last candidate, the next, in that evening, you're deciding? I, I don't expect an answer, but, you know, issues have come up, and I think trustee Betlock mentioned this. I think there has to be a very thorough due process investigation into each candidate's background, and so keep that in mind. Yep. Becky says it will be done by Friday.
Thank you.
Why do I ask such silly questions, you know? She's back here. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to be on the agenda. I have one very important issue to address, and I've kind of referenced it, you know, I think in the last meeting. If we have time, and I doubt we will, perhaps a couple of others. My voice isn't quite where it should be, so it's a blessing, a blessing to all of you. I'm beginning to suspect an allergy or something when I come to the microphone here. But at any rate, there is a major concern we've been discussing with the administration, and that is a matter of safety. And it's, you brought that up at the end of the discussions. As you know, I seldom come to the board with any issues that might prove controversial or potentially problematic for the board. Two grievances in forty years, I think, speaks to that. But safety is a matter that I have to give priority to, and chips will fall where they may. We've been meeting with the administration on this. I want to give you some background in a minute. I will acknowledge there's been some progress on this issue. It's been painstakingly slow, and it's too important of an issue to, to take up any more time. We should bring it to resolution very quickly. So what has initiated this? About two months ago, maybe three, a student threatened a faculty member by saying he would put two holes in the faculty member's head, followed by a gross vulgarity. This was witnessed by faculty. It was brought to the attention of the BIT process. The student then indicated that he would, he said he would put two holes in the hat of the faculty member. And somehow that was given some weight by the powers that be. I should point out to you, I, I would think they're one in the same, but in this case, they are, since the individual is a chef wearing a chef's hat in the culinary arts program. The student, let me give you another piece of background. There's presently two avenues for students, for student due process. One is on the academic side of the house. I didn't like the grade I got or the test was. And the union has nothing to do with that. That's purely on the academic side of the house. The other is the non-academic issues that a student has a right to due process on. And if you look at the policy, they're listed, and you get such things as the student was disruptive, maybe in a classroom, maybe at a trustees' meeting. The student might have been gambling on campus. I'm shocked to hear that during the final saga, and at the NCAA tournament, there might be any kind of wagering going on in the camp. Or perhaps the student stole something. But in that list is the student threatens bodily harm. And therein lies the problem, because that non-academic due process can take some time. And, and in some cases, rightly so. But we cannot afford time when someone's safety is at stake. And so the Federation has taken the position, there should be a separate process whenever we are looking at threats or actual bodily harm. A process, and I'll get into it in a minute, that is far more expeditious, far more clear than the current process is. So... What happened with this student? The student was suspended, I think approximately two days, maybe three. And then a due process procedure took perhaps a month. That due process procedure, the initial assessment was conducted by one mid-level management administrator. The review of that decision was handled by a panel consisting of one mid-level administrator. Now, let me give you some context. Recently, there was a faculty member whose credential to teach certain courses was called into question. That faculty member could have been given other work to do. Pull, pull that person out of the classroom where the credential's in question. Other types of work, other courses, whatever. That faculty member was suspended with pay, was not allowed access on campus, was not allowed access to email. Yet a student who threatens to put two holes in the head of a faculty member, the vulgarity itself should have resulted in a lengthy suspension. It did not. Another example. I am told by someone at administration, two students were recently expelled because of theft. What does a threat get? Two days of suspension off-campus. Now, the Federation believes that there's a need for a contractual agreement relative to the safety of its members. And other unions are free to speak to their concerns as their union leadership sees fit. But this process that we're talking about should involve the highest levels of administration if someone is a threat or has been the recipient of bodily harm. What we have suggested is a five-person panel. And that five-person panel consists of the vice president for student services. We were without, without one for far too long. We should have had an interim, we didn't. That should also consist of the head of HR, the head of campus security. But we propose two other people serve on this committee. One being someone with psychological expertise, not employed by the college, bringing a fresh set of eyes. And the other, a member of the Dearborn Police Department as recommended by the chief of police. Someone who has street creds and has been out practicing law in the streets and can address, again, a threat with a new set of eyes. The process should involve the suspension of the student, at least through the initial assessment stage, and we think that should be done within ten days. The process should involve that the assessment and subsequent need-be investigation be conducted in a timely manner. Why do we need contractual language? We need to define what we're calling the, a safety BIT, S-B-I-T, a Safety Behavioral Intervention Team. We need to define the membership. We need to define its authority. We need to require both parties' involvement in agreement and agreement in, in that process that is binding and enforceable, so that it's not subject to unilateral revision, it's not subject to misinterpretation, it's not subject to misunderstanding. Now, what we've said is, we want to be able to grieve the procedures, not the outcome. So if the, if the, this committee does not consist of certain individuals, if certain timelines aren't met, that we can grieve. But the disposition of the case, we are saying we will not grieve. We were asked to take that position by the college's attorney, we took that position.
May I interrupt, please, just for a moment? Could I entertain a motion to extend the meeting?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate...
Roll call vote. Hussein Berry, yes.
That was a roll call.
Yes.
Mary Lane?
Yes.
Cillian Asser?
Yes.
Mary Petchikoff?
Yes.
James Thorpe?
Yes.
Chair Michael Mead?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Please, continue.
Okay, thank you. I'll wrap this section up very quickly and just mention two other things that are far less significant, and there may be discussion on this one. Although I'm not expecting it, I just want to draw it to the attention of the board. So, safety requires a better process than is currently in place by the BIT policy in that you cannot group bodily harm with a lengthy due process that looks at the question of whether the student gambled on campus or not. Faculty face, our faculty, full-time and part-time, face significant odds of confronting a disturbed student, or worse yet, a felon. Far greater odds than administrators who reside in the Mazara Building or administrators who reside in Human Resources. Both of those facilities are secured facilities you cannot enter without a pass key. Now, I met today with the nursing faculty, because I do this periodically with various groups of my members, and the discussion at length was concerns about safety. So we've taken a couple of months to discuss this. What's happened in a couple of months? High school massacres? Acts of violence on the streets of our cities? And, and it shouldn't take a couple of months to address this. This is a campus that tragically experienced a murder. And it affected us all. And it continues to affect those of us who were here at the time. A sense of violation, a sense of being in a precarious situation. You don't walk away from those things when you know faculty who tried to intervene in a murder and were forced back by a kid with a shotgun. You don't walk away from those things when faculty heard both blasts go off. They killed this lovely young woman, and then the suicide that followed. And, and it's raised concerns among faculty that the possibility of a student due process lawsuit seems to take precedence over their safety. So rather than spend even further time discussing every possible circumstance about which the college or its attorney may obsess, let us rather strengthen safety, even if it means we err on the side, on the side of safety and risk a potential lawsuit based upon due process. Thank you for your time on that. If you, the other matters are so trivial, they should have been handled a year, a month ago. Because some of them go back to 2016. And I'll touch on these quickly. There is presently a structure of the college that has faculty chairs who are 1650 members handling student complaints about 1650 members. And I would point out to you, this presents real serious problems for the union internally. So what if we have a student say, "Union, that's incorrect, I want to be defended"? "Oh, we'll defend you, but we'll take the dues the other union member's paying to defend you against that union member"? There's a conflict within the union, but there's even a bigger conflict for the college. Maybe the one faculty member is pals with the other faculty member. Maybe one faculty member doesn't like the other faculty member. We used to put these problems in the hands of administrators. Key, the, excuse me, the associate deans. So there was no potential conflict of interest, and I've never been given a reason why. This has been discussed at length again and again and again and again and again. What's, what's at issue here? It doesn't cost you any money, and it doesn't cost you any power. But that's the case. Core selection guidelines, we've been after this for two or three years. Some departments have very nice, clear core selection guidelines. Management creates the template of what courses are offered, at what times of day, in what rooms. And all we've said is make that available to faculty so they can make some selections in a timely fashion. And make in enough time so that if the person is disappointed, the person can appeal and hear, and get the reasons. But ultimately, there's no money involved, ultimately, there's no power shift involved. And what we have, in all of this, I would submit, is the residue of an earlier administration. That it was adversarial at the drop of a hat. If it meant nothing, such as these last two items meant, in terms of the college's revenues and budget and power, you couldn't get it. If it's safety, you couldn't get it. These are things upon, solving problems like this is what builds labor-management relations. And that has a spillover in all sorts of areas that are positive for the college. If you get along with one another, why do you think only two grievances came to this board in forty years? Because, number one, there were relationships. I trust you, John, on this. I trust you, Andy, on this. I trust your steward on this. Absent those relationships, that's a quality you ought to be looking at in the next president. You have nothing but what we've experienced the last decade. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. I'm not looking for any answers today. I'm hoping that you are now aware of some of the issues that concern us directly from us. I wish I didn't have to bring especially that first one to the table here or the podium. But I appreciate your time if you have questions. And if not, I'm not looking for answers, I'm looking to resolve issues. All set?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. McDonald.
I just wanted to make a comment.
We will, you know, we continue, we recommend that you continue your negotiations with the administration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just my quick comment...
Oh, I'm sorry, you had a comment.
Just my quick comment to you as well, and, and also with what Dr. Mead said, to continue negotiations, and, you know, there are concerns here. I know that our policy committee is meeting, this is definitely something, too, that we are going to be tackling in terms of safety, hopefully. And we would appreciate the attendance from 1650 as we are discussing safety policies.
Whenever you, me just give us a little notice and we'll meet with you. But keep in mind, we're, we're seeking something that ultimately would be reviewed by a third party in arbitration, if we had to get that far, on process, on procedure, not on substance of the decision. And that's the difficulty we had. We had a policy, and the policy used to work pretty well. But if you don't hire an interim VP for student services, if you, in order to add to your fund balance, and if you perhaps do not understand and choose not to understand how the policy used to work, then you put the, the people I represent in the position of having to have something that is enforceable. And quite frankly, what we put before the college's representatives is not something outlandish. We've tried to address some of their concerns. I have a feeling that they think we're very close to an agreement, but when I look at what they draft, we're not close at all. And I think I might have mailed to most of you, I didn't have an address on someone, but I think I mailed to you the language that has been exchanged.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, next, next item, please.
Action items. Citizen participation. Citizens wishing, wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond for non-agenda, non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. I do have one blue card, that's from Mr. Michael Hill, representing the faculty. Would like to address the board about a safety policy.
Hi, I'm sorry to extend this meeting by even a couple of minutes, but I've got a couple of comments I'd like to make. I am a member of the faculty, I'm in the English department. I'm, I should also say, I'm also one of the vice presidents of the local 1650. But I want to speak as a member of the, of the faculty, as somebody who is in the classroom with students. You know, our students are living in a time where things are a little uncertain. They're not sure what's gonna happen the next day on, on the street or in their classroom. And I would say, a lot of times when we as a faculty come to our administrators and say we need something, it's not always in our own self-interest, but it's often in the interest of our students. And a safety policy, a policy that asks for a special team that would look at moments of threat and danger... And a safety policy, a policy that asks for a special team that would look at moments of threat and danger in a very serious fashion, is as much for our students as it is for us. I can't, I've been threatened by students a few times on this campus. I know many of my colleagues have been threatened by students. And, you know, students are in a moment, in a classroom, where they're vulnerable, and not just physically, they're emotionally vulnerable, intellectually vulnerable. They have to be in order to learn. That's what a classroom's about. Sometimes students take their vulnerability and turn it into a defensive mechanism where they then lash out with words. Those students that do that, they deserve a due process, but if they're lashing out with threats, they also need to have action taken very quickly. And not just for faculty safety, but also for student safety. And I don't mean here just because a student may then decide to carry out a threat and come and do something really dangerous on campus, but I also mean for a student's sense of safety within the room. When something like this happens in a classroom, it has the possibility of changing the education and the learning of every single member in that classroom. And if the college does not take this sort of policy seriously, if it doesn't take this sort of situation seriously, then we allow students to come in, overreact, or threaten people, and then other students see that happening. They are put into even a less secure footing, a less secure understanding of their place in that classroom. They begin to see a faculty member who is losing respect within, in the classroom, and is able to be threatened when that student who threatens them can just show up two weeks later. It's a really tenuous situation for many of our students, many of whom have come from situations of violence. They come to our classes, they expect to be able to learn in safety and vulnerability, and then they are faced where a situation of violence has lifted its head. I would suggest that our administration and the college needs to act pretty swiftly in trying to solve this issue. Our students come here to be protected, not just protected physically, but their minds protected. Your faculty members protect their minds, and if we are being, if we can be threatened and a student can then show up two weeks later after being threatened, there's something seriously wrong there. Thank you.
So that I understand, are you in agreement with the proposal of Mr. McDonald, or if you have your own ideas, I'm sure the policy committee would like to see those. Your point is taken.
I'm absolutely in agreement. Again, I'll reiterate, I'm one of the vice presidents of the union, so I am in absolute agreement with that policy. But I am also, I'm also speaking for, on behalf of our students. Thank you.
Just to follow up with Trustee Lane, we have to also be careful on behalf of our students, that when we are thinking about this policy, that we are not the criminal justice system. Specifically, if we want to have somebody from the police department, maybe as part of a committee. So we have to keep that in mind, and as we are talking about.